Good evening. We will call the Wednesday, May 25th, Kittle Hill's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we enter our moment of silence this weekend ahead of us, we will be entering the Memorial Day holiday, so this coming Monday is Memorial Day, and with that certainly we take a moment to think of those who have served and are serving in our armed forces. And also, I think it's a special time for us too, historically Memorial Day sets the stage for the start of our busy summer season and the extra stress, the extra work that it puts on our emergency services personnel, whether it's fire, law enforcement, our ocean rescue starts kicking into full gear here, so as we enter into this moment of silence for this weekend of Memorial Day, if you would keep all of these folks in your thoughts and prayers and hopefully also think of the wishes for a very safe summer ahead of us. With that, we'll call for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Agenda Approval, and I would like to make a motion for the agenda for this meeting, the May 25th, 2016 meeting, for the agenda to be amended by deleting the introductions and presentations and consent agenda items, and the addition of a closed session at the conclusion of the first response to public comment item.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will move on with the amended agenda, and I guess I could have asked that in the sense, but will we be rescheduling the presentation?
Yes, ma'am. One of the children is not available. We need to do it together.
Absolutely, so hopefully the next meeting we can add.
As soon as we can.
Perfect, okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we'll move right in then to the first time set aside this evening for public comment. I don't think I even need to go through the spiel because everybody here knows it by heart, but is there anyone that would like to speak this evening, any of the two of you that are here representing the public? Chip or Colleen, would you all like to speak this evening? Well, thank you for being with us. All right, then we will move. No response to public comments, actually I guess we'll move into, based on the amended agenda, the closed session. So in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143, 311, Section A, Section 3, I make the motion for the Board of Commissioners to enter closed session in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board, and for the purpose of consulting with the town attorney on the handling of a claim, judicial action, mediation, arbitration, administrative procedure, or resolution in the matters of Morrison versus the Town of Kittle Hill's and RM Investments LLC at All versus the Town of Kittle Hill's.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
We will move to closed session. Okay, we will return now from closed session.
And in the closed session, the Board gave the instructions, the litigation that we went into, discussed how to proceed.
Thank you. So we will move now down to new business. One item under new business, the beach nourishment agreement, the amendment to the interlocal agreement.
Yes, ma'am. This amendment to the interlocal agreement is, for Kittle Hill's remains the same, our amount with Dare County's contribution to the towns in Section 4.3 to be used for debt service will add $95,000 to the Kittle Hill's portion of the project. Our attorney has reviewed the agreement as well as our bond counsel and staff recommends approval as presented.
Thank you. Any questions, Debbie? A motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we approve Beach Nourishment Agreement, Amendment to Interlocal Agreement, and use one, the amount of $95,000 as presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. We will move on then to Mayor's Agenda. Mayor? Thank you. We will move on to Mayor's Agenda. Just one item this evening is in your packet, actually a couple items, they're proclamations and resolutions. The first is the proclamation for National Beach Safety, Rip Current Awareness Week, June 5th through the 12th. And certainly I commend our local ocean rescue and the initiatives that have been ongoing over the past several years to really raise awareness about the concerns with rip current safety, and so certainly advocate for this proclamation and declaring June 5th through the 12th as National Beach Safety Rip Current Awareness Week. And with that, ask or make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I also have a resolution in your packets this evening, it's a resolution opposing North Carolina House Bill 1122 that would limit marine net fishing. This is basically another legislation that pretty much kind of appears to ban in an arbitrary manner most, if not all, nets and their use in marine fishing. So there's, unfortunately, our fishing industry's taken hits from a number of directions, and this is just another legislation that appears to be doing that, so with that, I would like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution opposing House Bill 1122.
I'll second.
Any comments, discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Town Mayor's Agenda?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Town Attorney's Agenda? And we've revised consent agenda. So we're back to the second opportunity for public comment, that's a really quick turnaround. Chip or Colleen, do you have a comment this time? You're still our only public, right? Well, again, thank you for being here. All right, well then we will move into our general work session for the recommended budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017. And I know historically we have done this where we've kind of just gone through each section, gives us an opportunity to ask questions. As we discussed at the last meeting when Debbie presented the budget to us, this is the second year planned year, so for the most part, we saw these figures before, there's been some modifications or changes that I think were very well laid out in the overview. But with that, I know Beverly is here, and Beverly, I will start off by saying, once again, you and your staff and all the department heads that we have sitting here as well, and staff, thank you for the great work that you all have done preparing this. Turn it over to you or Beverly or both.
We, let's see. If you'd like to turn to page two. Just real quickly, some of the highlights, as you know, the tax rate is recommended to remain the same at .3809, and then Municipal Service District at .33. As I had mentioned when it was presented, we had added a big business regulation fee of $25 per business that operates in town. As you recall, the General Assembly a number of years ago did away with the privilege license. That is not what this is. This is, this basically is a registration fee that we get information from our businesses and business owners that provide, that we provide to the police and fire department. And I think, I think the revenue that we've estimated on that is $17,000 for the year. That was not in the planned year budget. You just see the percentages of the growth that have been estimated, and fortunately, you know, we're starting to see some of those things going up that we saw them decline for a number of years. And from there, if you'd like to turn to page four, you have your line item revenues, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address those. That's page four, five, and six.
Debbie, do you recall when the salary study was presented, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring my, my book, and recall, last year we adopted the first two phases, I believe it was, or not phases, but recommendations. I know in here in the summary, and I'm looking at page, aye, aye, aye. We, I'm looking at that and then page four, remidumeral, little, little, four.
The Budget Message.
That we still have merit, we still have the merit pay suspended, and I believe it was a recommendation that came out, or part of the recommendation, I don't know which, how it was grouped, to look at reinstating that of some sort at some point. I know the current budget doesn't have that in there, as I was going through it, and I may have way jumped ahead of anything here, but I figured, it's just my question. I know it's not included, and I'm not advocating for any change in our tax rate, so I was trying to look at identifying, could we do anything, could we move money around? One idea I had was to look at, we were looking at putting in additional $80,000 more than what the original budget amount for street and drainage projects for this coming fiscal year, and I didn't know if maybe looking at that $80,000 and putting some type of merit plan in place, because it's not necessarily reoccurring, could we do it in the form of, consider some type of bonus plan for merit?
Absolutely.
Using that $80,000, because we're still putting a nice amount, I mean, because of the power bill funds, we're still putting, if we didn't put that additional $80,000 in the streets and drainage, and instead of shifted that to allow for merit bonuses, which then wouldn't affect, it wouldn't be reoccurring revenue.
Right.
Maybe that would be an option. Though I'm sure maybe on the one side of the streets, we could use it for streets and drainage, but I just know that without, for, for a salary plan and trying to really go in the direction, we made some steps last year with the decisions we made to start putting things on the right track, but merit not being included still limits us in our ability to do that for employees, just about.
It would be a merit bonus instead of a merit increase.
And I actually had that written down as well, about merit, and that if we couldn't start it this year, could we look at definitely trying to get that implemented next year?
Well, that had definitely been the intention, coming back with the first year of a two-year budget, but there's certainly no objections if it's something that the Board would like to consider for this fiscal year. We didn't have it in the planned year, and I felt like that maybe that might would have been a bit of a large change with not having had any discussion with the Board, so I appreciate you bringing it up.
Well, and I guess maybe if we were able to take the $80,000 and do just merit bonuses for this coming fiscal year, and then ask for future fiscal years, we actually look at implementing merit increases that then would be reoccurring for whoever receives those.
How would you suggest that be structured? Does that divide up, in what manner, the $80,000? I'm in favor of it, by the way.
You know, I would actually turn to Debbie and historically look at how they've distributed merit raises before, just instead of it being an increase, they would be looking at it as a one-time, but do you all have a system in place to evaluate performance?
We did, we did, and we had, it was, you know, the departments have a percentage, obviously a small, you can't, it's not across the board, and, but I'm sure that we can figure out, we can figure out something.
So that an employee would get a percentage of, would be their bonus?
No, no, so what I was saying was, when we had it before, when we had merit bonus or merit increases, there was a percentage of formula that Beverly used to determine what a department would get, and we would go back and kind of massage that, and because this would just be a merit bonus, there wouldn't be, as the mayor stated, it wouldn't be reoccurring. It'd be paid out, excuse me, it'd be paid out in one check, as opposed to an increase in their salary that they would see each pay period.
And then, so based on that formula that they would use, each department would have, for lack of better terms, a pot of money that then they can award to their high performers, and so not everyone would be eligible, it would be those that hopefully have had really strong performance reviews and so on and so forth. And then in future years, we could look at doing something where, you know, then they're on a reoccurring basis, if you get one, it increases your salary.
And we'll run those numbers, and obviously I doubt that it's going to equal exactly $80,000, you know, so we may need to pull a bit from the fund balance, and then we're going to have to find a revenue source in the water fund to do, to do the water fund people in.
Is that something? So we scheduled our, we scheduled our public hearing on the budget for June 13th, but we have a second meeting in June, which is technically when the budget could be adopted.
Right.
So at the June 13th meeting, would you be able to?
We could report, yes, we'll report back to you with it.
Misinformation?
And have, and have a.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I was just, when I was going through it, I was like, okay, we're going to try to find some, that was a good thought to start with, that was taking from something that had already anticipated having those funds, and so when I saw that we were going to actually be able to contribute additional that we weren't thinking for the streets, not that we didn't necessarily need it, but if we had just extra money sitting around all the time, we wouldn't be having nearly discussions that we need to have. Okay, well, is everyone comfortable with having Debbie bring that back, considering that? So I know I derailed us where we were, so now we're back into ordinal number four. Okay, so were there, were there any questions concerning the revenues projections? Nice to see a little bit of growth. Ready to move on to expenses?
Okay. Then if we could, if you would, please go to page 14. Just some highlights for all the general fund, the 2% matching 401 contribution is reflected departmentally, and there is a 2.2% COLA amended and reflected departmentally. And then on page 15, it comes the line items for the administration budget. Any questions with any of those? There's no capital outlay requested or recommended for the administration. Page 18, the building in grounds, just some highlights, the debt service for the Public Works Days 1 and 2 is included, and you need to do some part, painting and carpet in our finance and planning in Public Works offices, rebuilding the tennis courts at Meekins Field, building renovations and replacement playground equipment at Aviation Park, as well as installing security cameras and fiber optic cables, camera cable, excuse me, at the Town Hall and Aviation Park and Pond, remodeling bathrooms in the Public Works Administration Building and the Ocean Bay Boulevard back house, and purchasing 1 4x4 utility vehicle. Line items we get on page 19. And the capital items that I just went over are on page 21.
Not, obviously expenditures are being made in that fiscal year, so all the works expected to be completed on all of these in that fiscal year.
And we are adding additional portage lines, we're doubling the number that we currently have.
I was going to ask.
I know.
See it spelled out?
Why, I had my sticky note.
Page 23 is the highlight for the Municipal Service District in town, and I will not read that, we all, we all know what we're borrowing, and the total project amount, and then on page 24, expenditure lines, and as we've stated several times, the tax, taxes that are collected in the MSD, they only be spent in the MSD on the project.
So for those who had concern, because we are having, basically, we anticipate a year delay and starting to actually put sand on the beach, didn't know that when we originally were starting, but those funds are safe and tucked away and will only be used.
But what would the interest that those tax dollars earn will go to the MSD?
Great.
Next is our Finance and Tax Department. The highlights are on page 27, and as I've mentioned, when the budget was presented to you, we were very pleased with our 10% decrease in our health insurance renewal rates for the employees and retirees. And then your line items on page 28.
So Debbie, with those rates, will our employees actually see their premiums, they will actually have less, have to be taken out of their paycheck?
Yes.
That's so great, I mean, rarely do you get to celebrate that, so it's so wonderful.
Absolutely, I can't remember the last time.
Especially 10%, I mean, kudos, kudos. Employees, keep being healthy because you get rewarded by being healthy when you see more money in your paycheck.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of things also to complement our insurance care, and there's a lot of things that they've, that they've done, and one, one of the most recent is the Teladoc, and we've had, we've had several employees that I know of, in the area that I'm in, that have used it, saving them, saving them time, saving them a co-pay, because they didn't have to go to the doctor to have to take off the work, go to the doctor or whatever, and simply go to the drugstore and pick up the prescription, and that's been, that's been wonderful.
Who is our broker?
We are through the League of Municipalities, and we have med costs.
Right, and we have med costs, but the League does the actual.
In fact, they've, they've been here this week, meeting with our employees, just to make sure they know things like that, you know, and that, you know, they want to use the mail order for the prescription drugs, that's, you know, a little bit less, but just making sure they know all the benefits that they have, the wellness and everything, so that's, that's been real good.
There's no capital outlay in finance?
Can, can I ask a question before we go any further on page 28? I just noticed on the postage line item that it almost doubled, I know there's a reason.
No, that's because of merit.
And I wondered if, I knew it either had to do with beach nourishment or.
Me.
You can't blame me for this. Should have known it was your fault.
The, the, the line item increased because we are, are becoming more and more, the CRS program changed their manuals, and to stay active and keep our grade, to keep our citizens' flood insurance costs down, it requires two large mailings a year that last year we did, we're looking at alternatives, but if we have to do it like last year, it will substantially increase our postage. And we also have to do public hearings and notices for the new flood maps that are projected to be out June 30th, which is also going to be a, every property owner mailing, so these are $8,000 to $10,000 first-class mail. Sorry.
I just had to, just looking at it, I just had to ask that question since it's, yes, since it was a big, big jump, sorry.
Then if you would please, page 30 for the MIS Division. Simply the current maintenance contracts, recommending purchase of fleet maintenance molecule to integrate with current municipal software, recommending purchase of server and additional police body cameras, and looking at a new phone system, starting to have some issues with ours. We have not, we're not, we're not at a point where I can tell you that we have determined that going with the county is our best direction, but that is being given consideration, and Nora is talking with, I can't remember the gentleman's name, at Dare County, but I will report back to you before we, before we actually do anything with that. Line items are on page 31, and then 32 shows your capital outlay. No questions, we can go to fleet maintenance, on page 34. We are very excited about the fueling station at the Public Works, I can't give you an exact date of when that'll be up and going, but we're looking at a savings, not just in the, in the cost of the fueling, but obviously the time that employees do to do that. And the line items begin on 35, with the capital outlay on 36.
And yet, how the, the price that we'll be purchasing the fuel is, I mean, I see down that it's charged back, but how that compares to where we're, where we have to go down, fuel left and what we're paying.
We don't have, yeah, we haven't done a price. Since we haven't actually started to rebate the purchase.
I feel like if the purchase involved, it would be less.
I hope we can start it before it keeps going back up. There's no additional questions, we can move on to the Planning Department. Page 40, and I did get a call from the chairperson of the Historical Landmarks Commission on the day that I was presenting the budget to you, wanting me to, asking if I would add some funds in the budget for the Historical Landmark Commission, and explain where we were with presenting the budget and the changing one number affected a lot of change. And explain where we were with presenting the budget and the changing one number affected a lot of change. And, but that I would be perfectly willing to, to bring it to your attention this evening. Meredith, I know we discussed back and forth some numbers.
Yeah, and from, from what I can gather, if we, we have to reprint the books this year. We're doing that on a two-year cycle with supplement pages in the, in between years so that we can order bulk. Last time it cost us about fourteen hundred dollars. We also do the.
We had a grant, we had an individual grant for that.
Well, last, last time we printed them, a commission member paid for it. And they're not on the commission anymore. But it was about fourteen hundred dollars, we did two hundred and fifty books. And then we also host the commission open house where we give the award to, or the plaque to the landmarks and then have an open house and we, and we provide refreshments for that, which cost about two hundred dollars. So if you were to look between the sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred range, it would be more than enough to. They also would like to be able to print posters or some sort of flyer like Southern Shores did for their open house. If you saw, Southern Shores flat top tours did an open house and had a flyer that they put at government buildings and restaurants and things like that. And, and they would like, don't have to, but like to be able to do that. I don't, I don't actually have a cost for that because we don't know what they want to do. It might be something we can print in-house, but like I said, if you did sixteen to eighteen for them, it should adequately cover.
How many people would we estimate that came by here that were about two?
We had, we had about sixty-five people come to town hall for the open house tour. But we also had the open houses, a lot of them now have guest logs. And there was about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty people that went through. Two of the houses that kept guest logs, which is a significant number of people for a three-hour, three-hour tour.
President Blesch, our old left and right Gilligan side.
The Gilligan side.
Steve didn't get it.
So, you know, it's, it's becoming popular. We're, we're, we're to Southern Shores, we try to do it the same weekend as Southern Shores done it. We're a Friday afternoon event, there's some Saturday morning event so that we're promoting each other. Our chair, Maitania, is amazing at getting the newspaper print stuff that's positive and nice about our tour and, and shows pictures of the houses that'll be open and things like that. So, and that's what they would like to be able to do. Our open house signs were also donated by a commission member last year. We use them again this year, but we won't have to replace those because they're in good shape.
Well, I was jumping back and listening to that to page sixteen. And I was looking under admin to see under special events and meeting expenses. The revised budget that we did for this current fiscal year to go to the fifty-nine. Does that have something to do with the fireworks and the timing of the money? Yeah, I'm all the way back up to page sixteen.
That is.
The miscellaneous meeting expenses or the special?
Well, first the special events. Because I'm wondering as, as far as the amount, you know, our actual expenditures in twenty-fourteen fifteen. And I know, you know, we have Ice Cream Social in there, we have the board and committee luncheon, Santa Claus. But I think fireworks was also.
I bet fireworks is in that line.
I'm wondering if the revised budget was, was that a timing thing about when we received the tourism grant? And when we had to pay up? Didn't we have to like prepay or something to get a really good, to get the deal?
Yeah, and, yeah, we, in fact, we discussed, Sharon and I discussed that today. We were going to look into where we are with our time along the fireworks. Because it's a July first thing. And then we get tourism, we got a grant for that as well, so.
I guess I'm just wondering whether, if there's anything to tweak between the special events and then also our, our meeting expenses. Is that related, that there's a jump there?
What we thought we would do this for the plan year is the appreciation reception that the board holds in the, early in the year for your boards and committees. That, that seems to be something that the boards and committee members enjoy and appreciate and the board. I, I just, I had the feeling that the board wanted to continue that.
Yes.
So we would go ahead and, and budget it as opposed to doing a budget amendment when you do it. We'd just get dates.
Got it. So that's already been built in versus having to do the, okay, that makes sense. I guess I'm just wondering if there's any wiggle room in there based on the difference between the actual that we spent in the fourteen fifteen fiscal year versus the budget?
If we, we can make this budget work and.
Find the eighteen.
And do what Meredith stated for the Historical Landmarks Commission.
So find somewhere between fourteen and eighteen hundred.
I, I had just told her that I would share her request with you, but we.
You guys, I mean, is there consensus to, to try to honor that request? I mean, I think it's a decent request. And I think it's good work, but really good work that they do with it, not smart use of the funds. Okay. So then, when, when we come back and meet, our first meeting in June, Debbie, we want Debbie to find that and, and add that, that in there, wherever makes the most sense to do that.
Well, I could do either way that you would like. But what I'm saying is between planning and admin, I think we can, I think we can be able to do the refreshments and print the, the books if you, you know, don't want to add anything. We'll, we'll do everything we can to do.
Pull it from one of the line items that's there. You just may have to, some of it may come from the planning line items, some may come from admin.
Right.
But you can pull it from what's here.
And then in the future, we will have a line in planning for the Historical Landmarks Commission. I, I'd like to discuss that more with Beverly then, because I don't know if she wants a line item for them or you take the printing out of printing, you take the, you know, the refreshments out of your meeting line.
Right.
And we'll, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
I'll see what you're saying.
Yes, if they're going to work together and make it happen out of a bunch of.
Meredith, you tell the chairperson that, that her request is, has been honored because those, those things still have to go through the town. The Historical Landmarks Commission wouldn't have the budget.
Right, it's still going to come through.
Right. And, and the planning department's done this ceremony every year that we've, we've done it so far.
You use that in your, just out of your expenses.
Various parts of our, of the planning department budget.
Right.
We can make it work.
We can make it work, yes.
The printing was to make it work.
That's perfect.
Yeah, I think there's definite consensus to that then. Great, okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Let's see. All righty. Police department. Page forty-four. I think the main highlight there is we are recommending purchase of the police body cameras. Expenditures began on page forty-five. The capital outlay on forty-seven. No questions on that, we can go to animal control, page fifty. I think this department does an amazing, amazing job with very little funding. See, theirs actually went down in the plan year. I think that's probably fuel. No questions with the animal control, we move into fire. On page fifty-five, another highlight. And we actually had an oversight of a D-Headhold that the chief had requested and certainly meant to recommend. I had it on top of my notes and now it's not. Here we go. That I would like to request your permission to add back. It's, it's replacing a two thousand five Ford Explorer. It was in the plan year and the. The chief would like to replace it with an SUV with four-wheel drive capability in order to operate it on the beach if necessary. And with your permission, I'd like to include that back in as a capital outlay and we would put it in our financing package.
Can I say one thing? It's actually in there, it was just at the wrong amount, that's all.
Okay.
It says thirty.
It says thirty-six and, and we estimated the cost to be actually somewhere of, yes, you got close.
Yeah, the oversight was increasing the cost.
Yeah, it's the cost.
But it's not going to be an Explorer per se, it may be something different.
It could be something, yeah, we're just replacing that Explorer.
But that's what we're placing.
Replacing the Explorer, yeah. Yeah.
The, the net effect on the budget for this year would be an additional nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for that difference in amount.
Okay. There's no questions on the fire department, we'll go to ocean rescue. Page sixty. No, there aren't, there is no capital determined that they would refurbish the ski as a side service.
Era instead of spend the five hundred.
If there's no questions, we can go to public services. There is a hundred thousand contribution to the sidewalk capital reserve fund. Expenditures begin on sixty-five and then the capital outlay, we can go over it on sixty-seven if you have any questions.
I think in here, this is where we may make that change to.
Yes, ma'am.
Not necessarily have a seven eighteen in the street and drainage, maybe less eighty thousand. I do like that we continue to put the hundred thousand dollars in the sidewalk. And to continue to, it's, it's been such, such great projects. Glad we continue to fund that.
And we'll take sixty-eight, it's the town bill. Next, we have our solid waste, highlights are on page seventy. Line tipping fees and then the capital outlays that are, that's requested on page seventy-two with the line items on seventy-one.
Roll-off containers, are those the big trucks?
The bins at recycle, the large containers, what you're seeing then, big roll-ins.
I'm guessing that request to increase the number of dumpsters for resales. We're having more commercial places that want multiple dumpsters, is that what we're seeing?
In the large homes we serve, we'll do four orders of eighteen each this year.
And you're seeing that more actually than from the crop, the homes, the rental homes?
Well, and we're also going through our inspection process right now, so we're catching a lot of the older ones. But we, the last load we got in, I, I think within six weeks it was gone.
That's great.
There's been an explosion in it, it's not heavy, which is good.
And do, and what, what portion of any does the property owner pay of that? Like if we're replacing it?
It's, it's there, if they pay for the, the cost plus a, a small fee. I think it's cost plus fifty dollars. But they do rust, I mean.
Right.
They don't last, last forever, so.
It would be like a homeowner replacing the roll-out.
And like with the homeowner, you guys deliver, do they, you deliver these to the site?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you remove, do we remove the old ones?
If the homeowner requests it, but these things belong to the homeowner. So if they want to keep it, recycle it, turn it into lawn art, what have you.
And if we.
Right, it might be a nuisance.
If they do request for us to remove it, what do we do with it?
We crush it up and we sell it for scrap.
You mentioned that you're finding some inspections, are there, is there a charge to replace it if it fails an inspection?
Yes, they have to purchase a new one. Or they can hire, there's, I think there's two or three local people that will actually attempt to repair. But if, like the bottom's rusted out, you wind up as much in repairs you do for a new one.
I'm in a dumpster with a welder.
We're falling.
Yeah, I think I'll pass on that job.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions on your general line? Move to the, where the department heads, and assistant department heads are, that are here, is there anything that I left out that we'd like to speak up on?
Draw attention to.
Okay, our water revenues, highlights on page seventy-six. We are recommending that we continue with the four percent increase that's, that's recommended in our master plan. No increase in the water taps or initial hookup fees. And it's continuing to include a repayment from the wastewater fund. Do you have a question? Meredith? Beginning with our expenditures. Eighty-four. Obviously they recognize and see that I'm saying healthcare rate. Cola. Line items begin on page eighty-five. This is for the Water Services Administration and then there is no capital outlay request. There isn't any questions there, if you can go to page eighty-eight please for the water plant division. Also, water rate is one point seven seven eight per thousand gallons, that's what we actually pay to accounting. And you see there the bullets that show the water system master plan improvements. You also notice there at the end is a fence and a gate around the fresh pond, continuing to work with the conservancy in Nags Head and having some public access to the fresh pond, and this is one of the first steps that we needed to, that we needed to do. Page eighty-nine, July item, January is the capital outlay. Beginning the engineering phase of replacing the water tank up at fire department. And as we talked about before, that project, we're anticipating that will be financed. As you notice typically in the water department, we generally, you know, we purchase our vehicles and so forth and, you know, pay for them, pay cash as opposed to financing them. But Beverly and I have talked about it quite a bit, that we most likely will be looking at financing a portion of that water tank.
The fresh pond fence and gate, where would that be located?
That would encompass the existing site around water systems and the plant to keep people that are using the fresh pond from being able to enter that site.
Gotcha.
Water systems, highlights are on page ninety-two. And one of the items that I mentioned to you when the budget was presented is that we're requesting, as opposed to continuing the replacements of the meters in-house, we'd like to contract that work out and get it completed quite a bit sooner than our in-house staff is able to do, and that is included in this. We're really seeing where those water meters are catching a lot of leaks way ahead of when they would be caught, when the meters are red, and we would like to speed that, speed that up. The line items began on ninety-three with the...
Where was that reflected though, contracting that out, which line item was that?
Is that in the, I don't know. It's not contracted services. Replace fifteen, forty residential meters, correct?
Yeah.
The four hundred thousand.
Right, and then machinery and equipment.
Since it's wrapped up in there, okay, got it, it's wrapped up under machinery, it includes, that covers the contract labor to do that, it's all a package, okay, great.
And you see there with the pickup truck, it's not a payment, it's the whole truck.
The water fund typically pays for their stuff outright instead of financing it, but we're looking to maybe change that some kind of...
Have no questions there, we can go to the waste quarter. Really no change there with the recommending, one oh one is the expenditures recommending that we obviously continue with our car shots. There's no additional questions, just to kind of recap for our June thirteenth meeting, eighty thousand from the street improvements and whatever other number to make, the percentages work, we'll bring that back to you for merit bonuses and will, for the following fiscal year, we'll have a recommendation for the board for implementing merit increases. Increase the amount in the fire department for the SUV. And in the water fund also, the same with the merits. Whatever formula we use in the general fund, we'll use in the water fund, just going to bring that back to you at the thirteenth meeting.
Any other requests or anything else you guys want?
And within the budget that we have, we will cover the requests from the Historical Landmarks Commission and then the future budgets have a line or whatever we determine to have.
Fill that in.
Fill that in, yes, ma'am.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all.
Thank you all for coming.
Appreciate the work, the time. It made this year's review really easy.
And I honestly can't compliment the staff enough, they really did an excellent job. I was, I was real proud of how close the numbers were from the plan year, you know, there wasn't a whole lot that needed to be changed, did an outstanding job.
Yeah, that's the part that impressed me, I was just going to say that, they have that kind of foresight, I guess you have to have a lot of experience, learn and do those things, it's great, I think it worked out great.
Well, with that, we're actually at the end of the agenda, so if you have any other comments, motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please sit down and sing on.
Aye.
Thank you, thanks. Everybody have a good night and a safe, merry weekend.